I'm sure that.
Let's go ahead and get started with the City of Centerton Planning Commission meeting December nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three with a roll call.
Tony Davis.
Here.
Ben Lewis.
Here.
John Sessels.
Here.
Jerry Harris.
Here.
Frank Langford.
Here.
Devin Murphy.
Here.
Joey Engel. Brendan Tovoda. Jeff Safer.
I'm here as well. All right, first thing on the agenda this evening is the approval of the minutes from the planning meeting of twelve five of twenty-three.
Don, I've got some approved minutes from twelve five twenty-three.
Okay. Motion in a second, is anyone opposed? All right, next on the agenda is the admin approvals, the first one is track split twenty-three twenty-one A and M Pizza. Dedication of right-of-way in easements at twelve twenty-seven, uh, Westerington Boulevard. Anything we need to know about this one?
Um, they're dedicating the access easement along the back where they paved twenty-six feet and then there's a brought stub out to the west so that when that house develops there's access. And then in the tippy-top north corner, they're dedicating like five feet of right-of-way where the sidewalk ended up having to jog.
Any questions? Not that I would entertain a motion to approve the admin approval for the track split?
To clarify, that's for the Domino's. Would be Domino's.
I was gonna ask, what was A and W pizza?
Oh yeah, by the way, did you know that
Open.
They don't service the north side of town?
Oh, yeah. Really?
Maybe if you put commercial on Main Street.
I literally called the the Domino's in Centerton to get a pizza delivered in Centerton and they said, we don't service your property and transferred me to Bentonville.
They come to mine.
They come to mine.
Come to mine.
Seventy-two's the cutoff and I'm like, do you know how many houses are on, anyway?
Wow, your north is seventy-two.
So I support a bin. Anyway, I would entertain a motion to.
Well, we can change it and make that right away. That's John, I'll go ahead, Joe.
Joey, I'll make a motion to approve the admin approvals.
How long you have a second?
Motion in a second, is anyone opposed? I should oppose that in this time.
I think mileage, you're probably about the same.
They probably are, but I just wanted to support the city. Uh, we do have two public hearings this evening, the first one is a public hearing for the planning schedule. There are some proposed changes. Do you need to highlight any or Taylor or?
Uh, on the, what, the, what is in red is what has been changed. As, and this was, I think, gone over last time and on the RV occupancy permit, it is in the code and I have to protest with staff, there needs to be a way that we can tell who is living in, as, living in a trailer. Using it as a residence or occupying it for an exclusive zone. This is also important for water and sewer, knowing where, you know, whether utilities are hooked up. Uh, fire department would like to know. Or emergency services and, and um, those are the main two that really expressed interest in this. So they would like for any department, if you have, people can do a permit and, uh, like Alan said, we put twenty-five, we need to make it so that they'll come in, but we don't want to be too high. So we could reduce the twenty-five dollars. We just, I mean, it's ten bucks.
Do you have to reapply every thirty days?
Well, after, no, thirty days, then they would need to come and do a conditional use.
What if they just drive away and come back? Every twenty-nine days?
Well, we, they would know that they're there, if they're, if they're parking in that same place or wherever they're parked. Then.
That's the way they get away with it.
Tell when people are, you know, especially a fence bib or something that, you know, they're occupying, they have to yeah, slide out, you know, so.
I would put over twenty-five dollar. I just didn't know that was favorite, have you done?
My question is, how much time is staff using, I mean, because we're trying to recover our costs on this, right? So.
Right.
But more importantly.
Twenty-five dollars covering costs, is not.
Probably not, but more importantly, like I said, it's for, if we know someone's hooking up, that, you know, are they discharging black water, reservoirs? Having those, and then when if there's a fire emergency, they need, like, fire needs to know, neighbors know, are they in the RV? It helps know that there's big areas between, hey, we show up and there's going to be a fire.
You're talking about, well, we go down ten dollars, well, I think you'll spend more than ten dollars for it to suffer either.
And if you look at twenty-five dollars for thirty days, that's pretty cheap.
Yeah, yeah. I was thinking. I want, that's what I'm saying, if you make it too high, they won't come in, they'll just leave every twenty-nine days.
We have these is to help offset your own phone cost.
I would say we just save it at twenty-five and if
Okay.
Something happens, we can always.
The reason fee, was it two fifty, then it went to three hundred? Um, okay, the signs that we post for all the public notices, most all the other cities, they'll charge for those, most of them around ten dollars. We figured out it does cost seven something, so.
Like six seventy-one.
Yeah, six seventy-one, that was if you order a large quantity, so that seven dollars was probably going to be a better price for those. And those are pretty cheap because our last box, I'm gonna say they're getting cheaper on the ink. They're not nearly as bright and pretty as the other ones. Uh, the, the other ones, like the large scale, with the, the wording, we've changed, you know, it includes the three submittal reviews, we just have tried to do some clarification with the wording. Oh, we do need to, okay. One thing, can you zoom in on that a little bit?
The large scale.
What we have are twenty-six plus units. And for residential, then, or large scale, at a certain price, and then if it's less than twenty-six units, then it's half that amount. For non-residential, we have five thousand square feet. So I had understood that we were talking about area.
With site area.
But site area that was being improved. Oh, not building. There, if it's building area, there are mid, there are non-residential buildings that are less than five thousand square feet. So is that not a large scale? And where does that fit in? Are we talking just a building? So that would be a small scale. Okay, let's see. Um.
If it's a convenience store that's got gas pumps, but the building is two thousand foot foot.
Yeah.
Are we charging?
In large scale or a small scale?
Cause the site area is a lot more than five thousand, so building is smaller. So we're going by building or improved area?
You can just pick one and go with it. It seems like it would be the higher, I mean, based on the work you guys do, it would, I think it'd be the higher price, right?
Right, I don't know that it's really pertains to the size of the building, as far as what a large-scale development is.
It's improved.
And if we want to change, you know, the, the area of improvement.
I think it's simpler to do just that, where it is, but it's not building, it's just the total work being done, the total area of the land, all that, I think that's a simpler method.
Cause the Domino's technically would have been a small scale in your example, right? Cause it's probably, what, a fifteen or two thousand square foot building? But there's a lot, there's a lot that went into.
And I was, I perceived it as, and honestly, I perceived it as this site improved area. That was the five thousand square feet, but then there were other opinions that, no, that's the, a building square foot and I, so I, we wanted to get clarification and then I will add that on there. As to what it is, okay. Thank you.
So what's on both of these, you have a first, like a submittal and then a final, I guess?
We do, we have finals.
What are you reviewing on the final?
All of the as-built, we do final inspections.
So it's the as-built review?
Yeah, so that goes to the next one, I'm adding the, the large-scale final, the site final. And then we had on the minor improvement, adding a minor site improvement final.
Can we spell out large-scale development? Or shorten the other one to, uh, see?
We can, I, I'll just spell it out. I think that would be good. Now, on the minor site improvement final, it has four hundred. And I did notice above, it's, it's a minor improvement. We found staff, but maybe that's I mean, for a small site, it's two fifty. So is that a little high on on that four hundred? Should we reduce it down to two fifty and be more consistent? Would be my concern, recommendation.
Yes. The few minor site.
Yeah, they're not gonna, they're not gonna be big problems.
Few minor site first we had was the turning raise, we did work on one oh two for Moe's, digging on Island, Starbucks, the Water Main Project, those are your minor ones, those finals would be incredibly quick and easy.
Okay.
Are you ever gonna have one that doesn't have a final?
We, no.
I'm just wondering why we are you gonna collect fees upfront?
Like when they submit.
They, there's submittal?
Yeah.
You're gonna collect the final, the final fee too?
Yeah, cause it's for the as-built plans review and.
No, he's saying when they, when they apply, are we going to collect? No, he's saying when they, when they apply, are we going to collect the entire six fifty?
Oh, no.
You know, not typically. We haven't.
I was, I would. Make it through the preliminary for approval to build.
Okay, that's why they're split out.
Gotcha.
Okay, then um, on subdivision preliminary, that's the same. We just, that includes three submittal reviews. Submittal site, subdivision site final. That was one. And we just did some rewording. I think that we had before includes three submittals. We had some wording, but we just, those are just mainly clarity. The re-submittal fee. Same thing with clarity, site reinspection fee. What did we add there?
I think we're making a line. It probably said the same thing as.
Yeah, I think it, for each submittal after third submittal.
Yeah, after reading.
So here's my question on this again. Does it matter on a minor site inspection on the site reinspection fee? It's two hitting them with two fifty again. Should there be a lesser fee?
If a minor needs three inspections.
Yeah, you're in a bad shape.
That's true.
Yeah, we need to pay that.
It'd be a discouraging.
Yes, they should. Yeah, it's no longer minor.
The minor has major. All right.
Lorraine, can you uh clarify that line too? I assume that's for each reinspection after the.
Yeah, I think that it's been shortened up and is covering up that line. So we'll be sure and add that, make sure that's added below.
And then on the subdivision site final, if you're categorizing the preliminary and based on lot count.
It's really about the same amount of effort, I think, whether it's small or large. When you get to that stage. I mean, the only thing is, there might be a little more to look at on the site. But I don't know, Alan, that's, for our, our side, it's about the same. But okay, and that's and then track splits, we just added amended and corrected, you know, all, all those miscellaneous type of flats with that. So the rest is the same, just give little tweaks to there.
So, on the grading permit you referred to, I guess there, there's no cost there. So, so we're not put, the costing though would probably be redundant. I mean, cause they're looking for graded.
Yeah.
If you change the grading warrant through Title sixteen, you have to change it through here every time. You're just making it, it's gonna go over and over and over again.
That way they can change it in their section and then it still remains the same. Before we had these fees, and this is why we went to this fee schedule. There were even all little parts.
Right, that's why I was laughing.
I think we also, there used to be, I thought there were signs on here too. Yeah, sign permits, it refers to that chapter also.
Is that the paragraph? Must be the paragraph. We didn't got to see it.
And there's different, I mean, especially with signs, it all depends on what they're doing. There could be whether, you know, it's a banner, it's
Okay, so if I was a developer looking at this, I, I would not have a clue what per chapter sixteen point one point. So I would think we'd need to clarify.
Tony, so that's why you gotta look it up. If they put a price and then it changes in the, in that chapter, then it's, then you gotta change this too. I think that's why they did that.
So this is included into that land development chapter? And this isn't a standalone?
This, no, this is adopted by ordinance and so it's in the municipal code.
Okay.
And so then it's referring to chapter eighteen oh four, which is in eighteen, chapter oh four.
It's not a flat fee, I don't imagine. It's based on size.
No, and this is also in, this is twelve or six, what's the zoning code?
Zoning code is fourteen.
Is that what this is in or?
That's what I'm talking about. I'm putting myself in development, because I'm trying to look at this. Where do I go?
You would go to.
Development code?
No, the municipal code.
The municipal.
It's all in the code.
That, that's all I'm saying. It's some kind of node asterisk down here or whatever.
Or center to.
To guide them to somewhere.
I could do her title eighteen.
So I'm, I'm just saying, I'm just trying to put my.
Chapter sixteen, twelve, four of this publication. You're in the same publication, right?
You got your zoning code, you got your land development code, you got your municipal code.
No, this isn't.
It's all the municipal code.
Yeah, everything's in all the municipal code.
So this is part of the zoning code, title fourteen. I knew something with the drainage manual, that's title sixteen.
This is.
It's not zoning. Yeah, so I mean, this is already, if you assume, just go to the next one, you say it's not title thirteen. It's title fourteen, that's all linked on the. We're looking at.
Don't develop, we're just coming in and just look at the feet.
And and maybe it would be more clear if we had the the code section of what is existing. But there is, you know, it has the code section table, whatever.
Okay, yeah.
Any other questions before we open up to the public? Then I would entertain a motion to open public hearing.
John, I motioned opening public hearing for planning fee schedule. I was changing this.
Second, Joey.
Motion a second to open a public hearing. Uh, anyone opposed? We aren't open to the public, uh, as discussed, uh, with a few minor changes. This is the proposed two thousand twenty-four planning fee schedule. If there's anyone that wishes to make any comments, questions, anything like that, we'd ask that you come to the podium, state your name and any questions or comments you might have. Second call for anyone that wishes to speak. And third and final call.
This is Joey. I'll make a motion to close the public hearing for fee schedule.
Second.
Motion and a second to close. Is there anyone to post? Any additional questions or comments? If not, then I would entertain a motion to approve the planning fee schedule with the minor changes. This is a recommend to council or?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna ask.
Yes, city area.
I'll make a motion to recommend to cancel the planning fee schedule.
Changes discussed this evening. Down a sec. Motion and a second, um, so the roll call from twelve twenty-four. All right, it's public hearing.
Uh, Tony Davis, Ben Lewis.
Yes.
John Sussums.
Yes.
Derek Friday.
Yes.
Derek Langford.
Yes.
Kevin Murphy. Billy Engel.
Yes.
Brenda Swoboda. Jeff Safer.
Yes.
And I will, to address Tony's comment, I'll put something like the title eighteen section of certainness.
All right, next we also have a public hearing. This is for conditional use twenty-three zero seven. Uh, Legacy Sports, uh, upgrading the grass field to turf. It is at two ninety-seven Seba Road, Zone C three. It's uh, three point nine six acres. That not correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, you wanna give us an overview of what you're looking for? Well, get your name, what you wanna do. Good stuff.
Oh, Legacy Sherona.
Yeah.
Uh, one of the owners of Legacy, uh, my business partner is traveling to Calgary. Uh, this is Chris Gossi. Uh, he's helping us out with the, the expansion a little bit. So what we've done, uh, as we are in contract with Tony Steele for the one acre of the mode area, if you can kind of see that playing field right there where it's mode. Yeah.
See there?
That's fun. That, that's gonna be one acre and our, our teams practice on that area now. Uh, but it's rough, as you could expect. It's kind of, you know, bumpy. Uh, so we had Pittsburgh State University donate their turf. Who else? Um, and we just wanna turf that area. So our teams can practice there. Uh, if you know anything about travel baseball, fields are really hard to come by. And we are trying to give our teams an opportunity to not go out and search for fields anymore. Um, so yeah, that's what we're trying to do. We're gonna turf that whole area. Uh, we're gonna have a fenced off field. And then uh, we'll have like a, a batting practice. Uh, it's called a turtle shell. Basically, if you've been to a pregame batting practice, those will hit, so the balls aren't going anyways.
Oh, you didn't? Oh, okay. You didn't.
Hey, would you like to give us a staff overview?
Yes. So, um Legacy Sports wants to invert one danger east of their facility into a turf practice field for a title fourteen um, zoning recreational outdoor facility. It's conditional in C three. So if it should be approved, this will require a minor site improvement um, to allow for the site grading. And in addition to that, we'd be looking at improvements to the lighting and the parking for the main facility. Um, because there is an original conditional use that we'll get into and the things that we discovered while doing some research. Um, per the applicant's narrative that you guys have, Legacy Sports isn't expanding the number of teams that they house, nor are they increasing the number of employees. Structural changes to, to the two existing buildings will be made. Um, an additional lighting will be added around the turf field that they're upgrading. Um, and that was specifically to make sure that they're not disturbing the surrounding residential neighborhoods. Additionally, um, we had a concept meeting when they originally wanted to discuss this and it was discussed that lighting needed to be updated for the existing site, cause right now they have a single light pole at the entrance, on the west side of the entrance, and then they've got some wall packs, but that's all the lighting in the parking. So it gets real dark out there at night. Um, so this site is Zone C three, which is neighborhood commercial, which is primarily for convenience or convenience shopping and services, grocery stores, barbers, beauty shops, laundromats, professional offices and those kinds of uses. The setbacks are listed. Um, surrounding uses. So this is part of a planned commercial node along the intersection of Seba Main Street, which is shown in the comp plan um, to the south, which is R two. Nice, offered by a hundred foot overhead power line easement. To the direct east and west of this parcel is Zone C three, and to the north is the proposed Casablanca development, which was C three with the P U D. And then to the northwest is Forest Park. So existing on site, there are two buildings. Building one, which is the one closest to Seba, is approximately nine thousand gross square feet. And building two is the one behind it, and that's about eleven thousand square feet. Both buildings are used as indoor activity spaces and no, no structural changes are being proposed at this time. Um, Legacy Sports Academy has an approved conditional use that was approved in December of twenty seventeen to allow the youth sports activity complex, because this turf field wasn't approved without original conditional use, a new ones needed to include it. Um, so with this new conditional use, I went back and looked at the old approved conditional use to make sure that all of those previous conditions were still being met. Um, so there are a few I wanted to bring up. Um, six, the site lighting. There's not enough lighting on site currently in all the parking. It gets very dark out there. Um. Parking, so with the original development, they were allowed to do thirty-nine parking spaces instead of what would normally be required for seventy. Um, and there was a sentence in there that said that it would be reevaluated after one year following C of O. Or if the facility reaches full operation as determined by the planning director and fire chief. So at this time, Lorraine has stated that additional paved parking is needed because there's been instances where there's overflow parking that's going on to other parcels around it. There is a um, gravel parts right now, um, on the west side of building two. Um, but it's got more like storage type stuff in it right now. It's not being used for parking. Um, so we'd like to discuss having them pave that for additional parking on site. Um, and then for landscaping, uh, with the development, a change order was submitted to remove the requirement to have trees along the west property line due to that adjacent property owner forcing concerns regarding the trees damaging their fence line. And then man-made hill slash ramp was created and seeded along the west side of the retention pond. Um, to buffer the site instead of planting trees. And there are pictures in your guys' packet of what that looks like today. Um, so I wanted to discuss that. Um, and make sure that, that your guys' vision. And then um, the trash enclosure, at the time, it was approved to be three-sided without having a gate. But now they have a dumpster in there. Yeah, with carts. Yeah. Um, so now at this time, we would like to see that be fully enclosed and meet our code. Um, as they mentioned, there is a four-foot chain link fence being, I think it's chain link is, I heard some chain link, okay. Same check. Um, a four-foot chain link fence around that turf field as well as turtle shells uh, along the south edge to prevent balls from going towards the residential. Um, and then they did state that for the field, they won't be using it past dark, so they're not adding additional lighting to disrupt the housing around them. Um, the special conditions are just all the things I just listed. Um, in addition, they need to do a track split slash a replant to get that one acre split off from the rest of that three acre tract that Tony Steele owns. And I believe they're under contract for that right now. Um, so if you guys have any questions?
Yeah, I was, I had a question. Going back to the original lighting plan, I, I thought I remembered specifically asked for lesser lighting to not disturb. Cause there was after dark batting cage, things that.
But in the front, there was originally only one light pole proposed, but since there was one of, and it was on the east, it was on the east corner of the drive. But they had said that the wall packs would be sufficient. And I think you can say that the lights are just very dim out there. It's very dark.
I, I thought that was by design. That's why I'd ask. So.
We talked about it earlier.
And Matt, we all, we all come up to the podium just so we can hear the microphone. This.
The neighbors of the west, obviously, we don't wanna intrude on them.
Yeah.
So we were looking at upgrading wall packs, but still they would shine down that amount.
Yeah.
And then propose like the gravel parking lot that you widen it. And, and keep it gravel. Really, it doesn't get used.
The, the only, the only time that in the past six years since we've been open that it overflowed to that next field was like two and a half years ago when we had a, a legacy night. We had all of our teams there to kind of, you know, start off the season and we realized that that was obviously too many cars there. So since that time, there's never been any cars on that side of the field. They, and then people do park on the side right there, where uh, on the west side of the building. Um, but the storage, the only thing there right now is the turf that is gonna be laid there. So there really is no, nothing being stored there. That tiny house was temporary and it's, it's gone now. Um.
Okay.
So yeah, that's, that's.
I would, I would.
It's gone. It's, it's, it's gone. And, and Chris.
Yeah, and, and I'm working on like we talked about with the dumpster. They're doing the chain link with the slates in it. It'll have a gate.
Yeah, yeah, but we were, uh, he, he's helping us out with, with the gravel. He mentioned gravelling that entire area to the west side of the building. He saw some of it was gravel and like half of it was grass. Uh, if we needed to gravel it for, for extra parking, we can do that as well too.
Does it have to be chain linked on the? Can we get a nicer dumpster enclosure? We are just not fans.
Yeah, I can send, I can get y'all pictures. This is what I put in at Pinnacle. All our buildings, the front of them will be the chain link with slates and it's, just seems to get damaged less than the wood. When they sling the wood opens, you have a lot of problem with the hinges and stuff. This is put in by modern fans. It, it doesn't really look like chain link. I'd be more than happy to show you a picture first.
It's a, what are the walls of the?
Other three, are they remain wood and then you just do a metal front?
We can do that or I was, we're doing the slates all the way around.
Okay.
Yes. Both nice, it's all.
All right. I think what they're thinking, typically we now require some type of masonry on the wall structures, but.
I mean, it's gotta make coat. We don't have anything. He's describing, it makes, what you're describing is outside our code. It'd have to be a variance.
Yeah, the walls have to be opaque.
And I assume, yeah, I assume this was variance was a part of the code. And I assume, yeah, I assume this was variance, was a part of the code, with the wall that would, right? Oh, was it? Oh, yeah, it could have been.
But yeah, they had said that they were just gonna use the full, so that's why they were. You know, not to make a closure.
Had, had we gotten reports of overflow parking or complaints for people?
I have just seen overflow parking, especially to the west. Maybe, maybe.
It's definitely only been one time in the field, for sure. West for sure, cause our teams practice back there, and a lot of times they'll just park back there instead of the front, so they don't have to walk back to the back. So a lot of times our teams will just park next to the building. Instead of walking all the way. A lot of times it's raining, it's cold, so, or they'll just park back there and just walk right into the building. Our front building is for private training, and our back building is for team practices. So our teams, so this.
So.
Maybe dedicated parking instead of.
It's all, the, the parking lot's that big circle. Okay, so some people do, but. Yeah, some people park there just cause that's what they've been doing for the past six years.
I'm gonna try to go one by one. We'll see if we can, so we're not bouncing around. So lighting. You got, and work with them to get some more appropriate lighting. Find them, you guys are good with that?
Well, whatever you guys need, uh, we, we, we can keep the wall packs now or. Get brighter wall packs, but whatever you guys need, we just didn't wanna, you know, make the neighbors mad. But that's easy.
Yeah, I think, and they can approve that. We don't necessarily need to see a. Plan or anything, as long as the staff, I speak for the rest, I mean, as long as the staff's okay with it, they know what the. What the, what you can do.
They won't wanna plan, you'll need to include a photometric plan if you're updating them to show what the. Lighting is, it's not going offsite, the shielding on it.
That'll come with your minor site improvement, that you guys do.
To show what you're doing for the lighting.
That way we'll know you're not bothering the neighbors to the west.
You said you weren't gonna do stadium lighting for the field, right? Just daytime operations, yeah, just till the sun goes down.
So it sounds like we do need some additional parking, and you guys don't necessarily argue with that. Or some parking cleaned up?
I think parking cleaned up is probably a better answer. I, I don't, I don't agree that we'd need this more parking. The only time that we've had an event where it was, was that one event a couple of years ago where we had all the teams there at one time. Uh, we do ask a lot of our team practices to, to drop off and come back because of the parking. Um, but very, very rarely does it, does it overflow like that unless it's just a special event.
It may be dedicated parking. I think you said something about people wanna walk to the back and wanna.
I, I think, uh, people do, I think people have just gotten used to part of their. That's what they decide to do.
How many additional spaces do you guys think they actually, they have thirty nine today? Is there a number that y'all had in mind or some improvement? Or just additional?
I just feel that they would look at, we kinda looked at just what they did on the front building. On the back building, they've got two overhead doors, the same and everything, but. So something similar to the front building. Yeah, just that west side of the.
Building one.
Building one, do the same thing.
I mean, if you loop the drive and people are wanting to go back there and drop off, that might.
It is, the drive is looped back there right now, so people drop.
Both sides of the building?
Yes. Not, not around the backside, just, just it goes right through the middle, right there. And people drop off and leave right there. So like that, that whole area right there is just a drive where people drop off, look through and, and then.
What about the field? Do you not think they'll wanna drop off at your new field?
Well, they would just drop off right there on the corner. Our field is right there, so they would just drop off here, like just drop off and. You can see the corner of the parking lot right there, drive. Yeah, most of our, our team members, they'll drop off and leave, and we only have one team back there at a time. You know, so at the max, there's ten kids on a team.
So, you know, yours is filled for, for games, right?
Games, just practice. Just practice, no tournaments or anything.
That's what I was gonna get to, like, okay, you, you, you would actually have games there.
I don't, I don't know that. We're just, I'm just trying to find a spot for our teams to. Practice without going somewhere else, you know, and having to pay for those outside of, you know, their, their membership. We're trying to provide more for them.
There's, I mean, even if there's three teams in their practice center and they have thirty nine parking slots, that's enough for three teams.
Right, but just like he said, most people drop off because there's not enough parking. But even like the.
That's why the year old, these are ten year old kids too.
Dropping a run in too.
I'm not even gonna slow down.
I dropped off, you know, I may wait in the parking lot, but it, you know, I don't have to drive somewhere else to wait for them. But the parking, even if they cleaned it up, it, it just needs some maintenance.
We, yeah.
They've said that they would do that.
Yeah, we will definitely do.
At least that, where people know that they can park there. That was another thing. I really don't think they know that they can.
Like I say, like, that'd be like the dedicated spot, just signage or whatever, dedicating them, but it doesn't come.
Because. At times I've seen it, they've had stuff in it, and then it kind of fades away, the gravel.
Yeah, I.
Grabbing all that and then put.
I just think some improvement. Surface signing.
So we gravel the whole area and say parking, you know, our, or parking, I've seen some places do that. We can, we can use that as parking as well. Yes. That, that you can see our stack of turf back there. That's, that's the only other thing that's being stored back there right now, and. You happen to catch one of my instructors boats there. He was going fishing that day.
I was thinking that I saw.
Yeah, he, one of my guys fishes daily, so he, he parks there and goes out there.
Must be rough life. Plays baseball, goes fishing.
That's kinda what he does.
It's a very visible site. I mean.
That's the hot trend.
On the other side, I mean, there's just, we had, you know, that they plant a few trees, but I think the one's really kinda surviving.
Keep it ahead.
This, this growth right there, this is the drainage to the pond.
Yeah.
And then that's some weeds and stuff that pond cleaned up. The, where that hill behind.
What do you do?
What they, they wanted that left there because we had said you need to haul off that dirt. And they said, oh no, we're gonna make it so that the kids, that'll be great training for them. We're gonna maintain it.
Whenever use it.
And it's not really even on this site property. But that's. We got talked into leaving something, so they didn't have to haul it off, and then, you know. I don't, apparently the kids aren't using it.
They're not doing stadium climbs.
If we need to, we can flatten that out with the equipment that we'll have there. On the field, if we need to flatten that out.
On the other side of the pond.
Yeah, I don't think we have access to do that. I don't think we can tell you to work on somebody else.
It's gonna have to be cleaned up with the, that other. And that's the history of the dirt mound. That's why they didn't want trees there because that would be.
Yeah.
Too close to the kids on this mound and.
Well. Alright, so we're good.
Good segue.
So next is landscaping. Um, so there is, are y'all proposing anything new? I mean, how? At the end of the day, how can we, I think if we compromise on some things like gravel parking in the back, then. Is there some additional landscaping that you can do? Whether there's some trees, cause.
Whatever you guys need to do for the landscaping, uh, originally, there were bushes on the front. By the sidewalk in the north end on Seba, they just died. Um, we have, uh, we had a, a landscaper, landscaper come out, you know, and had all of our bushes throughout, you know, over the year. We, right now, we have the river rock in our flower beds, um, but. It's more like, you know.
Maybe a couple of street trees, kinda dress it up a little bit.
Where, where would we need to put those? So we.
Along the, I, so I think. One, I think we should, and this is just my recommendation. I think we should use our, our standard landscape draft that we've been using everywhere else. Apply those to find the number of. Required trees. You'll have some in the front that you'll, you'll have to do along the street frontage. Um, I understand there might be some sensitive areas.
Gas main through there.
Where? In the back. South side of Seba? Either way, we need to distribute those wherever they can go onsite, and then I think you need some along the back there by the pond.
In that area. Outside the hundred foot easement though.
Yeah. But the hundred foot easement's the south end of that building, right?
Pretty much. In south side of the pond can't get any.
So tree, so trees right there.
Probably, probably, and again, this will be on your plan, but probably choose around the detention, some trees along the east side. And then let's see what she can get up front with the existing utilities. And the number's gonna be based on the draft, uh, landscape.
Does it matter, uh, what type of trees?
Yeah, it's all spelled out. All spelled out. The, the brass bears in there. The, um, trash enclosure.
Frankly, I think it should probably be.
Yeah, so just get that from them and let's make it look nice and.
Hey, though, would the, you were asking about apply replant, would that clean up this number five? That the adjacent streets?
What they'd be doing is splitting off the acre each themselves, so it wouldn't change any of the streets.
Well, good.
He has, uh, any of the streets wrong.
Our number five, the, um, from what I could find, only forty feet of right of way was previously dedicated. With this property and because Seba Road. That's the title plan right of way about hundred, so your property. Along Seba Road.
You go back to aerial, ten foot, like you in the parking lot.
No, it lines it right up with the parking lot. So that is something they could do with their replant.
That would be like right here.
Yeah.
That doesn't look like.
It don't look like ten feet. It looks about the width of the sidewalk.
We need five.
Yeah, five feet, sorry, five feet.
Yeah.
Five feet, that makes sense.
Would it not be forty five?
Forty five and Seba would make it ninety and that'd be a minor arterial.
I measured it all out.
Let's just say there could be some right of way dedication based on master street plan, what's currently out there.
It's all if the road ever gets developed, or when it does get developed, I should say.
Yeah, people would take a live walk and things like.
Okay, the plan shows there is ten feet.
The aerial ones, yeah, the plans show ten feet.
Both minus ten.
We've seen you guys do that. Fifty percent, I understand.
Alright, any additional questions for us?
I, I got, I have one thing that, and I think the hundred foot easement for the utilities is probably going to cover it, but. The baseball guy, I know how the turtles work, right?
Yeah.
You hit one down the line, that's, that's slice and foul, hook and foul. I, I'm a little nervous about.
Yeah, I can answer that. Our, the only teams that will be hitting on this will be eleven years old and under. Our, our older teams, we have an agreement with MyWay. And we use their field in return. All our older teams practice out there, so. That shouldn't be an issue with it. Unless we got a fifteen year old Dominican guy come in.
He hits a ball in that neighborhood.
And I was a lot more concerned about it until I saw the hundred foot.
Yeah. It's, it's, it's a lot.
Quite a bit, but, and.
I'm gonna entertain, entertain a motion, open a public hearing.
This is Joey. I'll make a motion to open a public hearing for conditional use twenty three S N.
Second. Motion a second, open a public hearing. Is anyone opposed? We are now open to the public. If anyone wishes to speak, have any questions, comments, concerns? In regards to the conditional use twenty three zero seven for the Legacy Sports improvements. We'd ask that you come to the podium, state your name, address, any questions, comments, concerns you might have. Second call. And third and final call.
This is Joey. I'll make a motion to close the public hearing for the conditional use twenty three S N.
Yeah, second. Motion, couple seconds, if anyone opposed? Alright, if there are no additional questions or comments in regards to the conditional use, uh, I would entertain a motion. For the Legacy Sports, um, it's titled upgrading to grass field to turf, but some additional things as well.
This is Joey. I'll make a motion to approve conditional use twenty three oh seven Legacy Sports, uh, upgrading grass field to turf. Um, along with the additional site lining. I'm parking in the southwest portion. Landscaping to meet the draft ordinance. And a trash enclosure to means current code as well as a. Uh, cleanup of the front to move the master street plan.
Second, motion and a second. Do a roll call for me, please.
Tony Davis, Ben Lewis, John Sessons.
Yes.
Gary Harris.
Yes.
Grant Langford.
Yes.
Devin Murphy.
Yes.
Julie Ingles, Francis Vaboda.
Yes. Thank you, Ash.
Thank you.
Alright, next on the agenda is, uh, M S I twenty three zero seven, watercolor apartments, carports. Uh, the requesting the additional carports at seventeen zero nine East Centerton Boulevard. Reminder, it's zone R four multifamily. Ten point nine eight acres. And it's the applicant here to give us a overview.
Okay, I sent an email earlier today. Apparently your email still hates my email. Um, they did request to have this tabled until the February sixteenth, because they are not able to attend, and they're not in a huge hurry.
And I put you in like three times, don't hate Diane. Uh, then I would entertain a motion to table, uh, M S I twenty three zero seven.
This is Tony making motion to table. Uh, twenty three dash oh seven.
Second. Motion a second to table. Is there anyone opposed? Alright, next on the agenda is subdivision, subdivision twenty three zero eight, uh, Tanzanite Estates, preliminary Platten Plans. It's Vaughn Road, south of Holloway Road, it's owned R three duplex and C three. The applicant here to give us a overview?
Yes, sir. Patrick Floyd with Half Associates, presenting here tonight, Tanzan State's Phase One. Includes thirty three duplex lots, two commercial lots, and some leftover tracks that. Uh, we work with staff, I think. Stragglers, we're working on. Or, yeah, help partner approval. Stragglers, we're working on this, yeah, help park approval. Uh, otherwise.
Eric?
Um, this is located just a quarter mile south of Grimsley Junior High. Um, the west is Oakmont subdivision. To the northeast is Annika Estates, Swissland, and, um, all of which are on the SF. Um, meeting high, single-family residential, this is duplex, so the dense fee is a little bit higher. Um, this is a five point three eight acres per acre. And as Patrick stated, these are the only preliminary plans for phase one. Um, we do have a layout of, of future phases, but approval will just be only. Consideration for approval will all just be for phase one. So there's two commercial lots fronting Vaughn Road, and then behind the commercial lots are the duplex lots. They will all be sharing. Um, one access way, Greenbrier Drive, now the commercial lots will also be gaining, gaining access from Greenbrier. Um, so sewer and water services will be from Vaughn Road. And then sewer utilities will be from the main to the east of the property. Center ten had a few comments regarding the, the sewer manhole and the alignment of the mains. Um, and they're also waiting for the electrical layout, or no, they're not, they have the electrical layout, but they have a comment on. The, um.
I just wanted to see the light.
Symbolology, yes, so they can understand, clarify. Um, drainage will have. Will consist of, uh, one dry detention pond, is one. It'll only service the residential dwellings, drainage. The commercial lots will have plants, have their own plants for drainage, um, whether they.
They'll provide their own detention.
So, um, the future plans for phase two and phase three are not. Not clear, um, there, the general notion is to modify the phase one detention pond. Until it's, um, no longer feasible within. Adjacent being, being adjacent to the wetlands area. So they'll be constructing a new detention pond to the south when the town comes for that. With that being said, there is a wetlands area off to the northeast and of the subdivision, um. Tract B is dedic, tract B will be provided in order to preserve that wetland. So that should remain untouched. Various points of access, um, actually, I'll make it to the, uh, the street agreement, street improvements agreement. Vaughn Road will be dedicated. Or right, um, right, where the Vaughn, Vaughn Road dedicated to. Adding an additional five feet of width, and then there will be a ten-foot trail provided. Um, we're still waiting on the, um, R dot depart, or the highways department to. Approve or to see if we can get trees planted along Vaughn Road. And then there is also a major collector that does not exist yet, it'll be. Towards the south, uh, overall subdivision. Um, dedication will type plates in phase one improvements, and the construction of it. Will be through either phase two or phase three.
So they are dedicating that right of way right now?
So, the street trees. We will have, um, guaranteed thirty-six lace park trees along Greenbrier Drive. And then the proposal for Vaughn Road will have, will consist of thirty-one, but shows.
I'd say if R dot, you know, says no, which they might.
Um, they might to oak tree.
We just, they need to go back in the site. A lot of the utilities in there. Um, quick question, is this, what's it zoned up front? What's the intent on those two lots? Some commercial.
Consider during the rezon, that C two was too intense. I was gonna get to the, um, the stub outs, so. Up there, or it'd be easier to be clear on the, uh, the main lands, the main set. Overall, man. It's to the north, there it's up, go up a little bit. Uh, that's, that's just phase one. Oh, no, that's the whole, I'm sorry, yeah, that's the whole. Actually, no, you wanna go?
We're trying to follow instructions, failing.
So, um, we're looking at, um, providing, uh, connections to. Any future developments that'll take place to either the north or the south, however, the south is still under Bentonville jurisdiction. Um, so. Or whatever, whatever happens regarding that, um. And then they're looking to connect to the stub out along from Annika Estates. On their stub out to the south, and we look, it looks like there is gonna be some, um, more. Um, property needed that they don't have for that road. So there might need to be, you know, some negotiation on how to adequately, uh, build that out.
Public right of way or that one?
That one.
The alignment on that road doesn't perfectly, perfectly align with the east property line. It's skewed a bit to the west. Um, not enough to where we can actually align and actually connect to it perfectly. So it's, they talked preliminary when they first proposed is how to tie into that. So I know we'll have to work out with phase two, and possibly that owner to the east. Them to have them do it now, but if they're not help, working with them, it's how to make that connection, because once we have. That many lots especially, we're gonna need to have some other kind of connection for them to get out and for emergency access.
Um, one thing on that is regardless of, you know, of it adjoining Centerton. Um, Bentonville will make them stub to the north on that southern property, so. I think we're probably missing out if we don't get a southern connection or anything. That's, that's phase three.
Yeah, there is that section there where they're doing the, the eighty in between, that aligns with wind song. Then east west, it actually goes to the property lines, that's a wind song extended.
I'm talking about a, I'm gonna straight south. But again, that's phase three, right, and we're.
Correct, this is just phase one, I would appreciate the comments.
That's a major.
That's a major.
Uh, it's over another twenty.
Yeah.
On the other side.
It's twenty acres east.
There's one more twenty.
One more thing, Patrick, can we do something on that sidewalk jog to stretch that out a little bit, so it's not so abrupt along, uh, two seventy-nine?
It's, uh.
Soften it.
Do we have a. There is a, there is a collector. On the next section, on the next parcel east of this. That, that would be what Bentonville would connect into, I believe. That's with Annika Estates, then. That's between Annika Estates and Harbor Manor. Go here.
Still don't think it's a bad idea to keep people moving, uh, but again, it's phase three, and then. Would you go back to the original or the overall, along Vaughn? I mentioned to Patrick to see if we can lengthen that jog in the sidewalk, good, down to the south. Soften that a bit, right, here you go. I just imagine a lot of kids riding their bikes on that.
Requirements.
Yeah, there was a utility there, it's why it had to.
There's something there.
I know, I know, but.
They're just instead of doing the rectangles.
Make it longer, longer to the north or whatever, soften it a little bit. I see a kid riding straight off of that, probably falling. I don't know, I think it looks pretty good.
That is, uh, the connection we're looking at making. Uh, to date, we've developed, tried to reach out to that owner, and they're not willing to. It's got a lot of wetlands on it, so it's, they're trying to do this all of the, uh, on that property to the east. So what we're trying to do here is, hey, we can get an emergency access, we can get a twenty-foot drive in here. I don't know if we can build the full, or we can't build the full right of way section. And again, if it's a big discussion and we need to go back and design with staff, happy to do it.
That's something we'll see something for, they're gonna be able to say, do this.
Yeah, I mean, ideally, it would line up, right? And I don't know, are you gonna have enough? I mean, you only have one connection. Right?
With phase one.
Uh, well, what about two and three? That's your only. Well, Greenbrier, obviously, onto two seventy-nine, but your only other, I think, unless I'm. Not seeing it right, your only other connection to an existing road is that one that we're talking about. I don't know how fire's gonna feel about that if it can't get, that's a lot of coverage for one entry.
Yeah.
But they said we are sprinkling, uh, facing. Well, we need to work with staff on that.
They'd give up some. Oh, that's what they're, as long as they. They can get away with it.
Faces.
Don't pull people out.
Have, they have to, uh, access, uh, due to it being in the. Land use plan and the master street plan, um. Those roads will get built out, and they do have a stub out to the north.
Yeah, we were talking about that one not being able to be a full right of way section, though.
Yeah, that one's. Going back with part of it.
I would say continue to work with, yeah. Staff as much as possible to get that.
Patrick, how is it that those property lines? Together, are in line.
From what I recall with Annika Estates, I mean, that's a residential subdivision, and so where that's stubbed out, how that worked out, it's just.
But when I looked at Annika Estates, that road was totally within the parcel. So that's why I'm not.
Annika did half and Harbor Manor did the other half. So it's split between those two north parcels, I think.
Harbor Manor hasn't been built.
Oh, into Annika, I'm sorry.
Right away, what you might be thinking of is to use that on the side of Annika Estates.
That's what I was thinking.
No, I just had looked at this, though, and. The way that that was lined up on that property line.
It doesn't seem odd, like it's built off.
Should match up. Unless.
I was saying, most of the master street plan lands on those, like centered on property lines, but because that was a residential, much like my property line on the north. Stub out.
That road's built, right? To the north, that, that road is built.
Yeah, this one's built, but I'm saying, just like we just, now, that's how. That came to be, when, we didn't, it wasn't property line information that we were looking at that set that stub out.
On the adjacent proper.
Lorraine, it looks like it's between two lots, or it's like a kind of end block, I think. So it's not directly on their eastern property line.
And the pond for Annika's on that corner, to where that's the lot they need for the corner, here's what they did for that, and they put a road out there.
When we hear back from the core. I'll get with you, Alan, and we'll look at that connection. I've got my ideas.
Yeah, see what's that?
Yeah, maybe zoom in.
That's how it looks on there, that's when they would actually put and found the corners. That's not how it lines up, and they find the corner for that south property. That's where they had a lot of issues.
Annika Platt and see where that corners, yeah, is it odd?
With GIS it is.
I, I don't know, I'm wondering if there's some surveying things.
It's like poor surveying.
Up the same.
It was a Friday when he surveyed this, the afternoon, right after the four o'clock.
Patrick, y'all did Annika, right? Y'all did Annika.
Yeah, we had, we. I can go back and share, but yes, we did Annika Estates, and I assume that that.
Might be worth a gun.
Yeah.
We're not gonna solve those problems.
Again, that's phase two.
I gotta say, yeah, no, they need to resolve it.
All right, any other questions or comments for the preliminary plats? If there are not, then I would entertain a motion for. So the twenty-three zero eight, the Tanzanite Estates preliminary Platten plans for phase one. Preliminary plans and adjacent street agreement.
Change the street agreement that Joey requested, that if R dot doesn't know the street trees, they put them onsite.
That should just be blanket every time, but.
Joey said, yes.
This is Joey, I'll make a motion to approve subdivision twenty-three oh eight, Tanzanite Estates, uh, the preliminary plans. With the, uh, minor items noted, um, such as the trees moving onto the side if R dot won't allow them. Um, softening the jog in the sidewalk. And I think, was that it? That was it, um, along with the approval for the adjacent street agreement.
John, a second. Motion and a second, is anyone opposed? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, under other business. You asked for reelection, appreciate it.
Yeah.
I couldn't be here, yeah.
That's why you were no committee.
Yeah. I was, uh, I was actually working, the, um, the second thing under other business, um, if you, one. This is the end of the quarter, so if you want to pick up your check instead of have it mailed, you need to let. Lorraine or Samantha or both know.
You can let, okay.
I'll pick mine up as well.
Do you have my current address? I think I, my last couple got sent to the wrong trip.
When are they, when are they ready?
What time do you mail them?
Sometime this week before Friday, or Friday? Yeah, I'm sure they'll be ready, maybe Thursday.
I'll come by and see you, save a stamp. I'll come by and see, save a stamp, two stamps.
Email checks are ready, like y'all send out.
Would it be more convenient for you guys if I come by and picked it up? Would it be more convenient for you if I came by?
Whatever's more convenient for you.
I just didn't have it mailed, it's be found.
Alright, everyone else gonna come in and pick them up?
Like Thursday, like money cash.
Just leave Thursday at two.
We are, she's already. It shouldn't take long, we get it all.
Alright.
Like my cash, no sequential numbers and no W two.
Let you know.
Brian's like.
The, um.
I'm in Salem, I'll turn around, I'll come back.
The, um. There's a chance, there will be a, uh, number back up, our first meeting was canceled. But there is a chance and a request out there, uh, for a potential special meeting for the first week. And so just kinda check your email, and it would be a Zoom, it wouldn't be an in-person meeting, so, uh, there's a chance we could have a. Special meeting called that could even potentially take place on the eighth, so just kinda keep your emails.
What, are you thinking?
You may be. Yeah, it could be at the.
That's a Monday.
Between the third and what, fifth, or the eighth.
Anytime before the, uh, council.
But it would be, uh, it'd be a Zoom, so you could do it driving around as far as I'm concerned, I mean, sitting in traffic, whatever it is, so. Just kinda, uh, just kinda check your emails. The, uh, our next scheduled meeting is the sixteenth. If you can't be here, just let us know. Thing else?
We do have a tech meeting on, uh, Thursday, the twenty third. There's two items.
Subdivisions of the county.
Alright, and Merry Christmas, oh, yes, sir.
I don't mind. Tell your name so they have access.
Luke Mooney, uh, thirteen twenty five, working in the street, they break files. Um. So listening, I, but I'm not here, I YouTube in to your meetings and last. Uh, week was, or last meeting was kind of very interesting at the end especially, but, um. There was a mention of a review in twenty twenty four of the land use and street plan, et cetera. Um, and so I took that in one city council meeting last week. And asked them about it, they were planning a meeting, they said, no, it's gonna be done by the planning commission, but they were very encouraging. Um, public participation. So, my question is, do we have official plans and the process, I mean, et cetera?
I wasn't at the last meeting, but, um.
But it was just brought up in conversation because there was quite a bit of concern about, uh, the. Our land, the existing land use plan outside of the city of Centerton. For an industrial designation which was giving a company from Colorado the option to put install. Rad, industrial batteries.
Do we, we don't have a plan for reviewing that yet, do we? Yeah, so today we don't have a plan, um, on dates or.
Deadline.
Times, or we haven't, we haven't got that far yet.
The process will include public. Well, and council will have to approve it once.
Well, yeah, but they reached it in public, just as you're saying.
Yeah, yeah, so we'll, we'll have, um, open public. Meetings, all of them were published, communicated out as best we can typically. Somewhat through bill, but also other means of publication that we can get that out, uh, last time we did it, we actually had. Uh, business owners on the, on the committee, uh, and we had, uh, people in town. Um, and we had, I call them committee, so people from like Water and Sewer and Public Works, and. So there was a whole team that was part of the previous one, uh, that we did, cause it was a big deal when we. And the company to come in and help us do that, and, and, and so we had a couple of open public meetings, uh, we actually. That group actually went to some of the schools and interviewed kids, which is like the coolest thing ever because they have no filter, uh, and so we'll do everything we can to try to have. They don't, um, and so we'll, we'll do everything we can to have public input on, on that, on.
Just wanna get. The process started as soon as you can, you know, you've had it. Since that initial effort was put into place, there's been a fifty percent increase in the population in Centerton. And if you take the numbers that the water utility board was discussing this morning. They're looking at another twenty thousand over the next decade or more.
Yep, so. It's gonna keep going, so.
Yes, yeah, that's my point, you know, yes.
After the first of the year, I'll get with Lorraine and them and see if we can kinda start putting one a timeline.
Thank you.
If there's nothing else, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, I will see y'all next year. I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Anyone opposed?
Alright, thank you guys.